All right, welcome. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is March the 12th, 2025. It's 7:01 PM. I'm sorry, Pat's not here. I thought we would sing happy birthday to Pat. Today is Pat Catanas' birthday, and he blew us off. It's all right. So Peggy, you want to start with the roll call, please?
Commissioner Orevaz?
Here.
Commissioner Blazini?
Here.
Commissioner Schre.
All right, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get into business, with a very special recognition this evening, it's a recognition of Eagle Scout Andre Rondon, right? John, I don't know if you have any comments or?
Yeah, I know we invited Andre to be part of this meeting. We thought it'd be great if you would tell us a little bit about your project and, you know, how you came about it and what you learned from it.
Yeah, so first, the project's located in Caden Woods in Scott Township. And when I was looking for a project, I wanted something kind of like bigger because I've seen a bunch of the Eagle Scouts before me do kind of like smaller stuff, like paint like a bunch of fences or make like a little fire pit. But I wanted something I could come back and be proud of in a couple of years, like decades even. So I chose a project where there was like, the hill was just like completely like a bunch of erosion, a bunch of dirt. The fireplace was like slanted, basically. So what I did was first was clear out the fireplace, started digging into the hill. That took like a good couple, good couple like weekends, like a whole month of just like June. I was just digging with like just labor by hand with shovels. And then after that, we were able to put in a retaining wall and we were able to put in another fire pit. We got a bunch of rocks from a nearby creek, put them on the other side of the hill because we added dirt on the other side because it wasn't that much room. And we stopped erosion a little bit on that side. Then we got a bunch of soil fabrics that like weeds wouldn't grow. Put gravel, made sure that it's even harder for the weeds to grow. And if you go there now, it's like, there's a lot more room to sit down. You can sit down on the retaining wall, it's not too high. And you can also like actually put chairs around the fire pit and like enjoy the fire pit because before, again, it was really like just uneven. So you couldn't put anything down, you couldn't sit, you couldn't enjoy the fire. But now you can.
Yeah, awesome. Do most of that work yourself or do you have a team helping you out?
Definitely had a team helping me out. I would go sometimes alone, but mostly I had like a good couple of people, like minimum like three or four. So that would help me out a lot.
Well, if you have to do another project, I'll give you my address.
Yeah.
That sounds like some work I need done this spring. I'm just jacking. We do have a certificate for you if you'd like to come up and I don't know if Andrea taken any photos? Congratulate you. Quite an accomplishment. You want to just come up? Come up around here. It's just easier.
Do you want us to move the chairs, Andrew?
There you go. Come on, squeeze in.
All right, Eagle Scout, congratulations. Good work, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job. All right, first order of business will be public comment. I just want to remind everyone that if you do have any comments, this is being recorded for replay on the YouTube channel at a later date. Public comments are for agenda items only. Are there any public comments? All right, we'll go ahead to item six, correspondence, South Fayette Library report.
I did talk to Ben beforehand. He's unable to make it, but sends his report electronically. In addition to that, we have Oak Ridge's report and South Bridge. See Chief Miller back there. No, you're all good tonight. That's all we have for correspondence to see.
Great. I reviewed all those. Item seven, consent of calendar items, approval of minutes from last month.
I can make that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of bills?
I think, yeah, I mean, I can give you the, you know, kind of top five if you'd like. You know, this month, we're still paying for some rock salt. That's one of our largest expenses. We do have our first quarter contributions to the library and to EMS that show up in the top five, as well as our health insurance premiums for the month.
There was one thing I saw in there was Mission Square.
Yeah.
What is Mission Square? Just out of curiosity?
Mission Square is our, that's who administers our pension program.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they used to be ICMA RC, now they're Mission Square.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to pay the bills or do you have any questions?
No, I sent them and he answered tomorrow. So I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Financial reports.
Yeah, we have a budget actual for you guys. You know, we are through two months of the year. And these are the two leanest months, right? I mean, not a lot of real estate tax revenue coming in. I think we're, you know, 1.6 million in revenue total for the year. Little over a million of that comes from their earned income tax. However, this is a month in March where we should start getting some of the real estate tax in. So good news is when you kind of reconcile it with the bank balances, it looks like we'll, you know, we'll be able to stay afloat until we get some resources coming in with the tax bills. But the first two months of the year, usually we operate on deficit.
Yep. Did we get caught up when I think last month, it was like $80,000? Was there a bogey we were waiting on with taxes? Did that get caught up?
We, as far as?
I mean, are we on track?
As far as the real estate tax revenue, do you mean?
Yeah.
You know, we can get a lot more since, if you look at the first two months combined, we're about 111,000 in real estate tax. So still not a lot. That's come in the first couple of months. Maybe I'm not understanding the?
We'll take it offline. That's fine. Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the financial reports?
I will make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bank account balances?
The balances are listed for you guys as of the end of February. You can see the general fund is 1.2 million bucks. So we do anticipate that coming over. That's largely the carryover we've, we had from our surplus at the end of '24. But, you know, they're there mostly for transparency sake. You know, one thing to note, the developer's escrow accounts is as high as it's been. So that's a testament to Pat being aggressive with the billing on that. So we're up to almost 350,000 in the escrow fund.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the bank balances?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, on to item eight, liaison reports. From a public safety standpoint, now I'm sure, I'm sure Chief Fennick will go into this a little bit more, but I had the opportunity last evening to attend the first Citizens Police Academy, which was very well attended. Lot of good questions. People were very engaged, I thought. And I think it's very well. So I don't want to steal your thunder. I'm sure you'll go on more, but I enjoy the, the time went very, very fast. And I think once people get a little bit more interactive, it's going to be a really big event that will grow, you know, as it continues. So kudos to you and Lieutenant Lineiger was very well received. Also, I attended the South Fayette Fire Advisory Council meeting and they were asking about being involved with the next budgeting process. So I don't know, maybe we can take that at the end of the meeting. Might be difficult with two people not being here. But start picking some dates because I think it was last April, whenever we started putting together that first workshop.
Yep.
So that's all I had for public safety. Public infrastructure, Becky, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything to report this time.
No problem. Finance?
Okay, so I'm also covering Shake Hog. So this update is from February because then the March meeting is actually tomorrow. So one of the things that we're looking at as part of Shake Hog is we're reviewing the bylaws. There's a lot of townships and communities that don't actually attend the meetings, either in person or via phone. So we're looking at those. The last review of the bylaws was in 2009. John, you have a copy of those. Yeah, you, because I know you had a meeting as well. So I've got a copy of that. Then the other thing that they talked about, there were two cert activations in January, two traffic reconstructions. And then the other thing that they had was, and this is free to the township, if we wanted to have an organization come in called CyBex, they could do a free cyber assessment just to make sure, you know, look at our systems, look at how we're protecting information. But John, you and I talked about that and we had somebody outside already taking a look at that. So there's not really a need for that. But it is something that's available to the township in the future if interested.
Yeah, that's good to know. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Postufka is not here and also Commissioner Han drew. So we can move on to item nine, old or unfinished business. Is there nothing?
No, nothing new or unfinished from our end.
Awesome. Go on to item 10. 10A, discuss and consider S01 2025 Pulverini Land Consolidation Preliminary and Final Minor Subdivision Consolidation Application Parcels 398 N-6 and 398 N-27 currently zoned R3.
Thank you. I'll jump in. This is for an application for a proposed consolidation of two individual parcels owned by the same landowner. One is his principal home, the other is a vacant lot. We reviewed the plan initially dated February the 4th. We provided a revised review of the plan dated February the 19th based on revisions from our first letter. They've addressed all of our comments. Planning Commission recommended approval of the plan and we do as well.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 10B, discuss and consider Resolution 2025-3 Township Building Facility Use Policy. And we reviewed this last month.
Yeah, we really haven't made any adjustments to it since last month. We did have a discussion with the board. We are actively enforcing this policy, but we wanted to, you know, formalize it in a resolution so we could, you know, have a little more teeth behind it. It is something that, you know, if it would were to continue to evolve or if we wanted to make changes to it, we can do that. But wanted to at least get a policy in place. And Paula's been doing a great job of getting these things on paper and starting to track the usage of the facility, which is really ticking up in recent months.
Great, thank you. Someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 10C, discuss and consider Resolution 2025-4 Naming April Safe Digging Month.
Yeah, this is a, you know, an effort of the Commonwealth and, you know, Pennsylvania 811. Just asking communities to, you know, pass a resolution acknowledging safe digging month and then, you know, maybe using whatever channels we have available to remind people of the value of calling before you dig.
Someone want to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed the safe digging, right?
No.
Yeah. 10D, discuss and consider a refund of $156.72 in penalties for taxes at 308 Gray Hill Court. The way I read this, I guess it's just returning some money from escrow from a mortgage settlement? Is that what?
Yeah, I think the resident paid their mortgage off in 2023.
Yeah.
Still those taxes on it, but it wasn't being handled by a mortgage company at that point. They, their scenario, they said they didn't receive a bill. So they, you know, when they did get a bill, they had fees and late notices on it. So they're requesting a waiver of those fees. They're still, they have paid their bill at this point, but haven't paid those fees.
Would anyone like to make a motion to return $176.72 to the homeowner?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
10E, discuss and consider retaining services of an architectural firm for the rehabilitation of 515 Miller's Run Road.
This is a project that we issued requests for proposals for. We submitted the RFP by invitation to four firms, walked them through the facility and then held a series of interviews with firms and are ready to make a recommendation. At this point, we're recommending that the firm MS Consultants is selected by the township. We believe they brought the most creativity, budget consciousness and portfolio experience to the table. So we'd recommend us awarding a contract to MS Consultants.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to retain those services?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 10F, discuss and consider a motion to declare 5088 Tom's Run Road a public nuisance and a forward in order to comply to the owner of public record pursuant to 171-10 of the South Fayette Township Code of Ordinances.
Yeah, this is an issue we've been working with Gary and his team on the legal side. It's a, you know, a home that appears to be abandoned. No one's, no one's been able to be contacted from the home. You know, we did an inspection before the meeting today just to make sure that no one, you know, came in and made corrections to it. We have issued violations in the past for things like open windows, open doorways, holes in the roof. Looks like the second floor is, the ceiling between the first and second floor is all the way collapsed. It does not appear there's any way for this home to be rehabilitated. Our goal here is to take this, be in a position to demolish the structure, kind of eliminate the blight. So we haven't been able to, you know, find a rightful owner. So I've been working with, with a solicitor on a process to do this legally.
Yeah, yeah. So this is just to declare it blighted and then the process would go forward.
You'll have this in front of you again.
Several times. Okay. So based on that information, would someone please, if you'd like, make a motion to declare 5088 Tom's Run Road a public nuisance?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, department reports, manager's report.
Yeah, a few items, a few items to touch on. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Few items to touch on. We did award just now the, an architect for 515 Miller's Run. I expect that project to build some momentum quickly. I think, you know, the architects are going to want to hold some stakeholder meetings. So I'd imagine over the coming weeks, we'll have some discussion on the project, including discussion with, you know, the seniors, the library, the Parks and Rec Board staff, that kind of a thing. So look for that to start ramping up in the near future. Wanted to report, Paula might, might touch on this a little in her report, but we did have some vandalism in our, in our parks, turfing of fields, Fairview Park. The lacrosse field was, was hit pretty bad. The silver lining in this is, you know, kind of a team effort. We have, you know, we have cameras in the parks. You know, the police department have done a good, were informed. They, they helped us kind of review film and track down.
There's, yeah, there's an arrest coming soon on that. We know who it was, so it's a matter of time.
So cameras and social media, we've, we set up a sting operation and they fell right into it. But it did, it has caused us to start looking at our parks and trying to find ways to put physical barriers that would prevent cars from being able to get onto these playing surfaces because it does seem like it's habitual.
So we even talked about it last night, right? The potential attack, right? What it could be, you know, how do you prevent something like that from even happening in the future? So.
So what would we do? We would put up like just barriers? Yeah.
Barriers, you know, depending on the park, it might be boulders. It might be baller, like bollards or chains, chain fence. We want to make sure that it still is aesthetically pleasing, but is effective. And some parks are more challenging than others. We noticed that preservation seems to be dirt bikes and quads that are tougher to deal with. So balancing, you know, barriers with cameras that we've been working with the chief and the detectives on cameras that can capture a license plate at night. Because we had a few instances where we were seeing the car, but we just couldn't make out the plate. So it wasn't, made it a little more difficult. So making some improvements to the types of cameras that are in place. Combination of things.
Okay.
Two other things to quickly mention. One, we did convene a meeting of the active transportation plan. A subset of these, these folks that were called on implementation committee had a kickoff meeting. You guys reviewed and adopted a plan in 2024. And, you know, I think the suggestion from Chuck was, hey, we can't let this sit on the shelf. So conducted a first meeting. We looked at the priority projects identified in the plan, namely sidewalk plan on Old Oakdale, as well as improvements to the Panhandle Trail as some things we want to, you know, take on immediately. And that's a good segue. The Panhandle Trail, we did receive a grant award, notice of a grant award for 130,000 to pave the stretch of trail that's in the township. So that's a good bit of news there.
That's the one, Paula, I wasn't here last month, but that's the one that you covered last month, right? And like the five miles of trails over?
No, that's in Fairview. Panhandle's down Oakdale surgeon.
Okay, okay, down there. Got it, got it. So that grant is for the Panhandle. Okay.
Yeah, we, we've been fortunate, Paula's been fortunate in helping us get grants for trails, different trails, Fairview Trails, as well as the Panhandle Trail. Yeah, that's all I have unless there's questions.
Great. Since Pat's out celebrating his birthday, do you have his?
Yeah.
Report? I mean, you only had, I think you had like five or six, seven bullets.
Correct. Yeah, I know that he joined you in a meeting with the, with the firefighters to talk about the, you know, structure and whatnot. I know he's been, he's been active with the escrow billings. We had a LERTA discussion with a subset of the board to maybe look at some changes to that program. We're looking at a map change. Then I think we also are going to need maybe your help, Gary, with some language on the ordinance that goes with it if we're going to make some adjustments to it. But we did get notification from the Commonwealth Finance Association. This is regards to the LSA grant for Alpine Road. Not necessarily that we were awarded, but just that the, everything was complete, submitted on time and that we should expect to hear something in the coming months.
Very good. Thank you. Are you, might as well stay on the, on the box here and go straight to building permits?
Sure. Not a lot of building activity this month. On the commercial side of things, really just a few and they're signage related.
Yep.
Outside of that, these are, you know, a few solar panels we're seeing, a few renovations and some new construction of homes as well. So dollar wise, not a lot in, in January, February, but hopefully we see that, that ticking up.
Yeah, sure. In the spring, it started to tick up. All right, thank you. Community and communications, Andrea? Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea Iglar, Director of Communications and Community Development. We made some great progress just today with the Comcast TV channel. We had the hardware installed that we need and I got access to the online software that I'll need. Right now, if you go to Channel 14 on Comcast in South Fayette, you'll see kind of a placeholder, time and temperature, kind of a screen that says more coming soon. So I'll be spending the next couple of months building kind of our own dashboard and then learning how to schedule our videos for meetings and so forth. So everything is on track there. And we do have the Parks and Rec Board also recorded and on YouTube now. So we have Parks and Rec planning and commissioners all available on YouTube monthly. I've been spending a lot of time with soliciting our advertisers and sponsors for the year. The upcoming Spring Magazine, we have over $20,000 in revenue at this point, including a brand new sponsor who wanted to advertise. And we have some other new sponsors as well this year, which is great to get those businesses in the region and our local South Fayette businesses involved with us. We are going to be facilitating a township-wide meeting of homeowner associations. This has been discussed for many years, actually. And now there's a group from a few different HOAs who have kind of taken the lead. They're very interested in getting this going. So it'll be their group, but we're going to facilitate, help advertise the first meeting and have, let them hold it in the Lafayette Room here in the municipal building. And it will be their opportunity to come together, figure out what kind of organization they want to have, maybe meet a couple or few times a year to exchange ideas and information about how to run their HOAs, new HOAs who want to set it up. What do they do? What are the management companies?
Like an HOA summit?
Yes, a forum, a summit, a G20 of HOAs. Yeah. And then, of course, the township would be a resource as well. With any, you know, if there's issues that they want to learn more about that we're able to offer, we'll be able to do that eventually too. So we set the date for that first meeting, Thursday, May 29th at 7:00 PM. And it'll be only for HOA board members. And of course, you know, township staff and commissioners would be welcome to attend as well if you'd like. And I think that's what I wanted to highlight tonight unless you have any other questions.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Jason, engineering report?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jason Polovich with Gibson Thomas Engineering Company. I'll go over some of the highlights of our report that's part of the agenda. We spoke on this last month. The 2025 paving contract was awarded. We've had a pre-construction meeting with the Shields paving crew. As soon as the asphalt plants open, they're going to provide us a schedule of when they intend to come into the township and get those roads started. We work on a weekly basis with township staff on the MS4 program. And we're going to start to prioritize the projects within the PRP plan to try to go after some funding sources for those projects for the future. Mohawk Road, we have an update on that. Koski Contracting has that contract. They've been issued notice of proceed and they're going to start next week with erosion and sediment controls and then actually get that project started. They will complete that this season and the paving associated with that road connection project will be done from this year's paving program. So that will be completely done by late summer of this year. We've been helping Paula with some of the trail work and park-related items. We have a number of development items in different phases of either approval or construction. And as I mentioned, we're helping township staff with some grant applications for some bridge replacement projects and other intended township activities. If anyone has any questions, I could elaborate more.
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe one thing to comment on. It's normally a comment during Jason's presentation. I don't see the, the individuals that bring it up, but the Apex Apartments and the water on the road issue, you know, Jason and his team have had really good communication with the Conservation District. I mentioned to you guys previously about the, you know, another site they brought him to. This site, we did, they did receive kind of a notice from the Conservation District, letting them know that, you know, this, this can continue. They didn't issue them a stop work order or anything. But it does look like it got their attention, you know, being on that site. It looks like it's cleaned up a good bit.
Correct, John. The Conservation District did issue a citation based on failure to maintain erosion and sediment controls at the site. They did direct them to replace a number of those controls, including rock construction entrance and several of the boundary perimeter controls. So they have done those actions and gotten back into compliance.
Great. Thank you. Paula, Parks and Rec?
Good evening. Paula Willis, Parks and Recreation. So kind of John touched on the vandalism. So unfortunately, the field's down probably for a month or more. So we had to relocate lacrosse. I just want to say thanks to the Hunting Ridge HOA. They're letting us have access to that field. It's a giant like ball field slash grass field. And they're working with the school district to get some use of those fields. But not an ideal situation, that's for sure. We are still waiting for the NPDS permit for the ball fields. But Jason, when do you think we're going to try to, when do you think we'll get that back? In about a week. And then I think it's 45 days for them to respond, correct? So hopefully start construction sometime in April. A little later than we expected, but we'll get there.
How long do you think that's going to take? So if you start it, say the end of April, let's say May 1?
They said about two, three months, but remember then grass will have to grow too. So even though like construction might done, we won't be able to get on them right away.
Yeah, so like August?
Yeah, August, September. Yeah. We have been conducting interviews for summer playground camp, park attendant, which will do the concession stand and splash pad, and interviewing for summer intern. So those are all underway that we hopefully will have that all in place by, by April. Working on getting a grant application in to fund a trailhead right across from OTB. So we'll have the grant in place for all the trails to come down, but then building a kind of a parking lot with a restroom and? kind of a parking lot with a restroom and concession, restroom and pavilion that kind of right across from OTB. So we'll be putting that grant application in.
Like a restroom restroom or a porta-john?
Like restrooms.
Oh, okay.
So like it'd be kind of like what's down the Panhandle Trail now. It's a little overhang with like just two.
On an, uh, an sturgeon, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Cool.
And Mary Ann, to answer your question about the, uh, earlier, about the Panhandle Trail, our section's kind of the only section that's not paved. So it's technically owned by the county, but each municipality is responsible for maintaining it, so we're going to try to get it paved.
Oakdale and Rennerdale's not paved.
No, but Washington, Washington is in like kind of further down.
From McDonald, all the way down.
Yeah.
There's goods and bad, good and bad, though.
Yeah.
In the wintertime, it's, it gets icy.
Yeah. Um, we have our bunny hop coming up on April seventeenth. Um, tickets are free, um, but they are required. It just kind of allows us to space some things out. Um, we, um, have our Earth Queen up coming up in April also, and, um, a fun little thing, I was on a podcast, if you're interested to listen about it, um, kind of cool to talk about the past ten years where the township's come. Uh, it's on Spotify if you're ever bored.
What's it called?
It is called Beyond the Bench. Um, and they interviewed me, we went from everything from where the parks were ten years ago to programs that we've created, um, so if you're ever bored. Any questions?
I do not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Police report, Chief.
Good evening, John Phoenix, Chief of Police. Um, as Commissioner Lozini said, uh, earlier, uh, last night was our first in a two-month, eight-week, uh, Police Citizens Academy. Uh, it was very well attended, we had fourteen people in attendance. There were a couple that didn't show up, but they were, reached out today, said they forgot they'll be there next week. So, um, they really enjoyed the tour of the building, um, a lot of great feedback. There was people that, that had attended other, uh, citizens academies, and they said, at least from the first week, we knocked it out of the park, so the, the compliments were great, so I couldn't be more happy with that. So, again, um, Commissioners, you're welcome to pop in at any time, uh, throughout the next, um, seven Tuesdays, seven PM to nine PM. Um, in February, um, our officers answered four hundred and seventy calls for service, and the reason I bring that up is, uh, this was an extremely busy February. January, February is usually the slowest time of the year for us, um, but we had four hundred and seventy calls, um, for service, and a lot of them were serious nature. Um, you can see that in my report, but, um, we're starting to pick up with the calls in the slower months, which is kind of concerning to a degree. Um, so, you know, we're on a trajectory to pass last year's numbers by a significant amount. Um, our traffic, or our officers stopped two hundred vehicles throughout the month of February. We, uh, assigned twenty-five cases to our investigators, which is another extremely high number. Usually it's about four or five, and the month of February, it was twenty-five this month. So it just kind of shows you and puts it in perspective where we are in February. Could be an aberration, I don't know, but that's, um, pretty much all I have tonight. Any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Really quick, just digging in, um, Chief, into some of the stuff you said. So the slower months are becoming more, right? So you did two hundred and seventy calls more serious than in years past, right? So how does that compare to, oh, I can see it, so?
Yeah, in my, yeah. My report will always reflect what we had the previous February. Um, and last year was four hundred and thirty-six, which at the time I considered pretty busy February, but we have forty, fifty more calls this.
So where do you think you'll end the year, just roughly?
Um, we're probably going to be closer to sixty-five hundred calls for the year.
Okay.
Um, because we start, when you get through March, you start to get into the busier months because people are out and about and.
That's about a ten percent increase from, if, if the trajectory stays the same, okay.
Yep.
Oh, you also, we talked about last night, you have more people moving into the township, you have more traffic and.
Get more traffic, get more residents, you get more businesses, you get more commerce, you get more calls, so. And again, it's still, I mean, I'm not by any means saying it's not safe community, but with growth and the things that have happened within the last ten years here, one of the things I mentioned last night, when I started here back in nineteen ninety, we had nine thousand residents. In thirty-plus years, we're up to almost twenty thousand. So it just shows you with the growth and everything, what, what comes with that. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we've been busier than normal. Might be a, the exception, not the rule, but I wanted to bring that up. Any, any other questions on that?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works report.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vitalis, uh, Public Works Director. Andrea, page number forty, please. In, um, in the month of February, uh, we conducted, uh, safety training, um, cuts, scrapes, and the punctures, that was the, uh, topic. In upcoming, upcoming training in March will be dog bites, uh, dogs and, uh, dogs bites. Uh, highlights for February project, snow management, detailed reports can be obtained on the pages thirteen through fifteen. With the amount of salt use, amount of man, uh, manpower over time and the regular time. Uh, also, a road crew had, uh, have been working on paving and patching of Hickory Grade Road by Shafoni's Farm, uh, Cecil Rising Road. And Cecil Sturgeon, Cecil Rising Road. A storm sewer projects are underway. In a public works special project, uh, public works completed, um, Boys Home, um, renovation of the parking lot, and we prepared, prepared a path to accept, uh, new salt shed at the Boys Home Park. Uh, mechanics, uh, page number twenty-six, uh, mechanics performed inspection for twelve vehicles, including police fleet, and maintenance and repair on eleven, on eleven, uh, piece of machinery and equipment. That's all I have for month of February.
Okay. Uh, a couple of questions for you, because I do read your report. Uh, from pages thirty-three to thirty-five, that's labeled fleet, machinery, and equipment. There are forty-three items that were in red.
Yes.
So can you talk a little bit about those?
Yeah, uh, those, uh, those items are, good question, uh, those items.
And in my mind, red bad, right?
Yeah.
So I'm just sitting here thinking like, do I have to replace forty-three trucks and rollers and loaders and?
Correct. Yeah.
All right, when?
Well, I mean, no, you also see the fleet, no, that's a fleet number in a, in a.
Correct, that's why I'm asking you the question, because I don't know if these are double counted, if they're actually forty-three pieces, so.
Those, those are the vehicle in our fleet, in our possessions that needs to be replaced in the near future. And some of the, uh, some of the vehicles, you can see, uh, some, uh, grade all, uh, yeah, yeah, roller. I would mostly focus on the trucks, or the truck fifteen, fourteen, seven, eight, um, some JCB machines that.
Tell you, how do they get into the red, like? That's what I mean, what's the rate, the rating from a twenty-four to a twenty-six? Like, I, I don't know, like, how bad is it, right?
Yes, um, what, uh, the way the system, unbiased system, I'm, I'm putting in, uh, I'm putting in, um, a year of the vehicle.
Subjective data, it's not like you look at it and, ah, it looks old.
Correct, yeah, subjective data. Um, but so it calculates the age, calculates the, uh, hours for the machine or, uh, mileage, calculates the, uh, fuel assumption, uh, it calculates, uh, considers, um, amount of, or how, uh, a usage, uh, you have a moderate use, heavy use, light use. You put all this criteria in, and system automatically spits out, uh, a color for the machine.
Yeah.
But they, if, I can walk you through if you, if you, uh, can stop at my desk and we can, uh.
Maybe we will, I mean, I just look at it, because it's like, I think we have more red than we have white, right?
Yeah, guys, yeah.
And the rating is twenty.
That's the reason, guys, I would like to keep it on my, uh, on my, uh.
I mean, and obviously, something that has a sixty-eight needs to be replaced more than something that has a twenty-five. I just would like to start seeing, all right, when is this to be expected?
Yeah, replacing the rating, that's what you want to focus on. I mean, we can set the replacement rating, uh, for example, it's a, could be twenty or, or twenty-five.
It's a twenty-five now, right? Because it seems like everything over twenty-five is what's in red.
Roughly, yeah.
And the scale is what?
Uh, I, I, I don't know what's a scale. I mean, if I put the brand new machine in, it's, uh, gives me like one, let's say.
What's the highest you've ever seen?
Uh, that's fifty-eight.
There's sixty-eight.
Uh, the truck number eight.
Have you ever seen a seventy? I mean, I'm, I'm wondering what the cap is, that's what I'm asking. Does it go to a hundred? Like if it's all the way dead?
I don't know, guys, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I can play, uh, play with the data, with the inputs, yeah. But also, uh, also it calculates, uh, amount of work orders, uh, uh, amount of, if the vehicle not being used, being repaired, uh, it takes, um, sender does a good job putting all, uh, all the work orders, uh, all the parts associated with the vehicle. I, I can actually print out report for each week.
Please don't misunderstand me, I'm not questioning the data, I'm just saying I don't know what the rating means.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, but I know it's over twenty-five, it's a, a system automatically moves into red.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That was the one question I had. The other thing that I wanted to ask you, about ten months ago, we talked about those signs that were still sitting in Public Works.
Correct.
What's the plan for those? I didn't see them in the report.
Page number forty-two, right in the middle, uh, it's a Welcome to South Fayette Sign Installation, a priority high in a day of completion, supposed to be March twenty.
It probably only goes to page forty-one, no, I'm kidding.
No, that's the last one.
Okay, thank you. I had a resident ask me about that.
Yes, and we are, uh, currently, um, we already submitted PA one calls, uh, Chuck, it's not, uh, easy as it seems, we cannot just.
Not saying it is.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, uh, it's under, it's underway, uh, PA one calls have been submitted, and the first one, you will see installation, uh, on Oakdale Road, coming from Oakdale on Union Avenue, that, that's location.
I don't expect those to be done in the middle of winter, right? But when I start, when I start getting questions about them, I just need to respond to the resident, that's all.
Yep, no problem, but once again, it's a priority, March priority, it should be done by, uh, by end of this month.
Vitalis, with regards to those, we had to, you rented some equipment to install them, right?